I'd like to call the meeting to order. Would you all join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a roll call, please.
Counselor Clemens?
Present.
Counselor Landjevan?
Excused.
Counselor Livinggood?
Present.
Counselor Markucci?
Present.
Counselor McDonald?
Present.
Counselor Nicola?
Present.
Counselor Regis?
Excused.
Counselor Spinelli?
Here.
Counselor Vandal?
Present.
Seven present, two excused.
Thank you. Agenda item number three, consider and accept the special town council minutes of Wednesday, October 19th, 2011.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Counselor McDonald?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was not present, I shall abstain.
Okay, thank you. For everybody else, can I have a show of hands?
Abstain.
Two abstentions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda item number four, consider and accept the council minutes of Monday, November 21st, 2011, meeting.
So moved.
That's today. This should be November 7th. I'm sorry.
Just, second.
Any discussion?
I haven't done them yet.
All in favor? It's unanimous, thank you. Agenda item number five, subcommittee reports, a general government, Counselor Spinelli?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The meeting of the general government subcommittee was held on Tuesday, November 8th, 2011, in the Rice Conference Room. In attendance were Chairman Spinelli, committee members Counselor Regis, Counselor Vandal, and citizen member Gabriel O'Flesh. Also in attendance were Counselor Clemens, Counselor Markucci, Town Manager Clark, Holly Cristo, Raymond Goethe, and Michael James. Chairman Spinelli called the meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Agenda, one agenda item, review and vote to accept the health insurance renewals for the two Blue Cross Blue Shield senior plans. Mr. Clark discussed the renewal rates and the decrease to the two plans, MedX2 with Blue Cross prescription decreased by 7.6 percent and Medicare HMO Blue decreased by 8.7 percent. Motion was made by Counselor Vandal and seconded by Counselor Regis with a favorable recommendation to the council to approve the health insurance renewals for the two Blue Cross Blue Shield senior plans. Vote by show of hands, all in favor. Motion to adjourn was made, and we adjourned at 7:04 PM. Thank you very much. No new meeting planned at this time.
Thank you, Counselor. B, DPW?
Ahm, Madam Chair. A meeting of the DPW Subcommittee was held on Tuesday, November 15th, 2011, in the Rice Conference Room. In attendance were myself, subcommittee members Counselors Landjevan, citizen member Mark Moore, and MRE's Capi Strand. Also in attendance were Town Manager Clark, Maureen Chesler, Rich Pallone, Estelle Cowett, and Roger Cowett. Counselor Markucci was excused. I called the meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Agenda item number one, review snow plowing and removal bid awards. Mrs. Chesler discussed the bids received. She said they had received more bids and slots available. Mr. Pallone said he has been plowing for the town for five years and had never missed a storm, but was informed that his bid was late by two hours, and therefore was not put on the list. Counselor Landjevan asked if there was anything that could be done for Mr. Pallone. Mr. Clark explained that due to the bid laws, he could not make an exception for Mr. Pallone, but there was an opening for a temporary plow driver using the town trucks, and he could apply for that. Mr. Pallone said he was insulted that the town would not consider his application after five years of service. A motion was made by Mark Moore and seconded by Counselor Landjevan with a favorable recommendation to council to approve the snow plowing and removal bid awards as ratified at the meeting of the town council on Monday, November 21st, 2011. By a show of hands, all in favor, four to zero. A motion to adjourn was made by Chairman Vandal and seconded by Counselor Landjevan. Vote by show of hands, all in favor, four to zero. I adjourned the meeting at 7:50 PM. Respectfully submitted Evelyn Rivera, recording clerk. That's all I have, Madam.
Thank you, Counselor. C, Education and Human Services, Counselor Clemens?
Thank you, Madam Chair. A meeting of the EHS Subcommittee was held on Tuesday, November 8th, in the Rice Conference Room. In attendance were myself, committee members Counselor Markucci, Counselor McDonald, citizen member Holly Cristo. Also in attendance were Counselor Vandal, Counselor Regis, Counselor Spinelli, Town Manager Christopher Clark, Michael James, and Raymond Goethe. Meeting was called at 6:30. The first agenda item was to discuss and vote to accept a change order number two for the middle high school project. Mr. Clark discussed the change order and its components, and then a motion was made by Counselor McDonald and seconded by Counselor Markucci with a favorable recommendation to council to approve the change order number two for a maximum total of $47,108 for the middle high school project. Vote by show of hands, all in favor, four to zero. Agenda item two was to discuss and vote to approve a repair to 262 High Street and notify more builders to begin the project. A motion was made by Counselor McDonald, Counselor Markucci, and Counselor Markucci to approve the repairs. Seconded, I guess. But this item was removed from the agenda due to prevailing wage laws, and it's been put on hold until we will come back after the bidders are advised, and we'll go forward with that. The motion was withdrawn from Counselor McDonald and Counselor Markucci. Motion was made by Counselor McDonald and seconded by Counselor Markucci to add an agenda item. Vote by show of hands, all in favor, four to zero. I want to point out that adding this agenda item was just in terms of, what I'm going to read, agenda item number three, which is appointing Michael James as a citizen's member of the EHS Subcommittee. This was a widely talked about position that was open. We had said it many times at the meetings. The only application that we'd gotten in was Mr. James. We had anticipated it coming in perhaps the week before, but when it did not come in, it did not get put on the agenda. But because it did come in on Monday, none of us felt that there was a problem with adding this as an agenda item. And we would like to, so that's exactly what we did. And agenda item three is to discuss and vote to appoint Michael James as a citizen's member of the EHS Subcommittee. Mr. Clark said he had received a letter of interest from Mr. James, and since there was still a vacancy, he was recommending him. A motion was made by Counselor McDonald, seconded by Counselor Markucci with a favorable recommendation to council to appoint Michael James as citizen's member to EHS. It was unanimously passed. Motion to adjourn was made by, I don't think it was made by me, but that's okay, Counselor Clemens and seconded by Counselor Markucci. Show of hands, four to zero. We do have, we did have another meeting since then. It was on Thursday, November 17th. And this one was also in the Rice Conference Room, myself and Counselor Nicola, citizen's member Holly Cristo, Counselor Spinelli, Town Manager Christopher Clark. Meeting at 6:35, and there was only one agenda item, to discuss and vote to approve the transfer of FY 2012 local cultural council funds. This is a routine transfer from the state to the local cultural council that they do some very good work with, the monies. So there was a motion made by Holly Cristo, seconded by Counselor Nicola, and there was a favorable recommendation approved, all in favor, for the cultural council funds in the amount of $8,100. The meeting was adjourned at 6:45, and we are tentatively set up for a date on Monday, the 28th, at 7:00 PM. That should be firmed up tomorrow with the office. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. D, Planning and Development, Counselor Livinggood?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have a meeting I'm planning on scheduling for November 28th at 6:30, and I'll let Counselor Spinelli read the minutes, since she chaired the meeting for me.
Okay, thank you.
Meeting of the Planning and Development Subcommittee was held on Thursday, November 17th, 2011, in the Rice Conference Room. In attendance were subcommittee members Counselor Spinelli, Counselor Nicola, Counselor Clemens, and citizen member Evelyn Petrelli. Also in attendance were Counselor Markucci, Cassandra Ackley, Rose Canoyer, Holly Cristo, Jose Dinghy, Esteban Carrasco Jr., Cheryl Ortiz, and State Representative Peter Durant. Counselor Livinggood was excused. Counselor Spinelli conducted the meeting. Meeting was opened at 7:00 PM. Agenda item number one, preparation for community development block grant submission. Vote to select social services projects. Discussion was held on the selected social services and their point valuation from committee members. Motion was made by Counselor Clemens and seconded by Evelyn Petrelli with a favorable recommendation to council to approve the two highest scored projects, Literacy Volunteers and Full Gospel Center, for receipt of CDBG funds in the amount of $50,000 each. Vote by a show of hands, all in favor, three and oh. Vote to recommend grant components. Mrs. Ackley said we will be allowed to apply for $900,000 in CDBG funds this year. She discussed the components of the grant and the breakdown for these funds. Motion was made by Evelyn Petrelli and seconded by Counselor Clemens with a favorable recommendation to council to accept the recommended grant components. Vote by a show of hands, all in favor, four nothing. Agenda item number two, review CDBG contract with Central Los Americas. Mrs. Ackley discussed the contract with Central Los Americas. This is one of the projects the council previously voted to support with CDBG funds. Motion was made by Evelyn Petrelli and seconded by Counselor Clemens with a favorable recommendation to council to ratify the contract with Central Los Americas in the amount of $50,000 from CDBG funds. Vote by a show of hands, all in favor, four nothing. Agenda item number three, review CDBG contract with Aspira. Mrs. Ackley discussed the contract with Aspira. This is the second project previously voted on by the council for CDBG funds. Motion was made by Counselor Clemens and seconded by Evelyn Petrelli with a favorable recommendation to council to ratify the contract with Aspira in the amount of $50,000 from CDBG funds. Vote by a show of hands, all in favor, four nothing. Agenda item number four, review contracts for Morton Street, or is it Morton or Moreton? Morton. Morton Street and downtown sidewalk design. Mrs. Ackley discussed the downtown sidewalk design and gave an overview of the history of these sidewalks. Since the contacts were just received, contracts were just received today and have not been reviewed, Mrs. Ackley requested another meeting to discuss and vote on these contracts. Agenda item number five, update on downtown partnership projects. Mrs. Ackley said that in May 2012, there will be a showcase conference at the Hotel and Conference Center. The idea is to showcase what Southbridge has available and attract new business to the area. Motion to adjourn was made by Evelyn Petrelli and seconded by Counselor Clemens. Vote by show of hands, all in favor. The meeting was adjourned at 8:10 PM. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Counselor. E, Protection of Persons and Property. Is there any? That would be Counselor Landjevan, and I don't believe there has been any meeting or minutes to read this time. Okay. Agenda item number six, Chairwoman's Announcements. I don't have a lot, but one thing I would like to mention is yesterday afternoon, I had the privilege of attending. I'm not quite sure how you put that. I would like to call it an Eagle Scout installation. There was a young man in Southbridge by the name of Michael Caprera, our town attorney's youngest son, who was elevated to Eagle Scout, which is a very rare and difficult, fairly difficult achievement. And I was, I had the honor of attending that ceremony. It was very nice. It was held at La Salle, and I'd like to say in the camera and for the record, Michael, if you're out there, very proud of you. Once again, congratulations on a job well done. And to his troop, Troop 160, which seems to have garnered quite a few Eagle Scouts have come out of that troop. That was very impressive. I'm going to move on, because I'm sure that there are others who have many, many other things to say. That's all I have right now. I'm going to move to agenda item number seven, Town Managers' Announcements. Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have several announcements, just in terms of the same vein. We did receive several thank you letters from the Boy Scout troop for assistance. One goes to Michael Trombley for the flag retiring ceremony. The next one is also to Mr. John McHugh, who has helped out with filming various events. So they sent a letter of appreciation for him to actually record the flag retiring ceremony. And then also, a thank you is put out to Detective Scott Bailey in regards to, he helped some of the scouts obtain their crime prevention merit badge training. So I thought that was a nice gesture on the troops' part to send thank you notes, and I thought that they should be kind of publicly acknowledged. A couple other items, it is coming up on that time of year. We did receive a Department of Housing and Community Development letter in regards to fuel oil assistance and cold relief. They have sent out brochures for the fuel assistance programs that they have. What we will do is put them onto the website for folks that have an interest. The materials that they've distributed, cold relief brochure released by the Department of Housing and Community Development, Division of Community Services, Community Services Unit. The brochures under the program are the Low Income Home Energy Assistance Program, LIHEAP or Fuel Assistance, the Weatherization Assistance Program, known by WAP, and then also the Home Emergency Assistance Retrofit Task Weatherization Assistance Project Program, known as HART-WAP, or the Heating System Program. Information can be obtained from the website, the DHCD website, at www.mass.gov. And then if you go to the DHCD website, we will also put those onto the town's website so people are aware of those programs. And then just two other items. The first item is, this is an item of good news, that the town of Southbridge has received a credit on our Blue Cross Blue Shield HMO and PPO health insurance premiums for our participation in the federal early retiree reinsurance program. Fifty percent of this credit will be passed on to subscribers of these two non-Medicare programs for a one-time reduction in their deduction. Active employees will see this reduction on their December 1st paycheck, and retirees will see the reduction on their November 30th pension check. Those amounts are actually fairly substantial, virtually almost reducing the premiums for that month down to just a few dollars. And that actually, the total value of the credit was $150,000, $75,000 to be shared with the employees, and then $75,000 to assist the budget for the town. Also, just as a reminder, with the Thanksgiving holiday coming up, I do wish everybody in the community a happy Thanksgiving, but the town hall will be closed on Thursday and Friday in honor of that holiday. And then lastly, we do have, it's coming up on the season to set the tax rate, so we have published in the paper, and I do wish to just read this, because it is an important part of our budgeting cycle. The town of Southbridge is having a public hearing. A public hearing will be held in the town council on Monday, December 5th, at 6:30 PM in the McKinnon Council Chambers here in Town Hall. This public notice will be held pursuant to Chapter 40, Section 56, on the adoption of a residential factor for tax purposes and the adoption of the percentages of the local levy to be borne by each class of real and personal property. Any person wishing to speak will be given the opportunity to be heard. This was published, noticed in the town clerk's office on November 14th, sent out under Town of Southbridge, myself as town manager. It was in the paper November 18th, and will also be on December 2nd. And that is otherwise known as the Tax Classification Hearing, in which we decide whether there will be a single rate or a dual rate for the tax assessments for the existing fiscal year. That concludes my comments this evening, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Agenda item number eight is, there are presentations, I believe, this evening, introduction of new businesses, and Mrs. Ackley would like to do the presentation?
Yes, I would. I appreciate the opportunity to come here tonight and share two new Southbridge businesses with you, one in the Big Bunny Plaza, one in the downtown area. With me tonight is Sally Chinick, owner of the new Super Clean Laundromat, which is located in the Big Bunny Plaza. Ms. Chinick spent a lot of time planning for her new business, and it shows, it's really a lovely facility. And also, it's energy efficient. It's a clean business. I'll let Sally fill you in a little bit about her new venture.
Hi, I'm Sally Chinick, and I'm in business with my brother. We've opened up the Super Clean Laundromat in the Big Bunny Plaza, like Sandy said. We're in the location where the motor vehicle used to be. Sorry. My family's been in the laundry business for over 40 years. My dad opened, when I was a kid, he ran laundromats, so we've got a lot of history in this business. It's all state-of-the-art. It's a brand-new facility. We have all stainless steel washers and dryers. They're all made in Wisconsin, so everything's US-made. Very high efficiency. The washing machines are high extraction, so there's hardly any water when you put them in the dryer, which then again saves on the gas. We're very happy with the machines. Our facility is open 6:00 AM to 11:00 PM every day, seven days a week. It's attended. We have self-service laundry, and we also have a drop-off laundry service where you can come in and the attendants will wash your clothes for you. Everything, like I said, is state-of-the-art. We don't use coins. It's a card system. So you come in, you'll get a card, put money on it, and that is what you'll use throughout the facility. We have made everything very well lit. We have it all very bright and clean. We're trying to make it a very safe environment for our customers. We also have a surveillance system, and the card system also helps to reduce any vandalism. And we're having a free drawing, December 17th, for a 32-inch HDTV. So if anyone wants to come in, take a look at the facility and fill out a form, maybe you'll win it for Christmas. And thank you for hearing about the business.
Thank you very much, Sally, and good luck.
Thanks.
Also with us tonight are Lou Jacques and Jeff Mansof, who are the owners of the Clockwork Tattoo and Art Gallery at 315 Main Street. I've gotten to know them fairly well, because they, a tattoo operation has to go through a lot of permitting, so I've gotten to know them. They're both very fine people. You're probably wondering, well, how does a tattoo operation and an art gallery go together? But I can tell you, I've been there, and it does work, but I'll let them tell you about it.
Thank you, Sandy. My name's Lou. This is my partner, Jeff. And as she said, we have Clockwork Tattoo at 315 Main Street. What we set out to do is something a little bit different than what most people are used to as a tattoo shop. Traditionally, they were located around naval bases and in the wrong part of town, so to speak, and we tried to make something a little bit cleaner and friendlier. It's very bright inside. We have a lot of different artwork around the walls, and we do tattoos on a regular basis, and also get a lot of custom artwork coming in for different applications that people want. We look forward to being part of the community, and anybody interested in coming down and getting tattooed, you're always welcome. We take walk-ins, but we do encourage people to make an appointment ahead of time. And we hope to see anybody down there soon. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're open seven days a week, from noon till 7 o'clock at night, and any kind of custom artwork that we can do, you know, for the town or for any personal matters or anything like that, is more than welcome to come down. We do murals, we do oil paintings, acrylic paintings, anything like that, up to t-shirts as well as tattoos. That's pretty much it.
Thank you very much, and good luck to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Ackley. That was agenda item number eight A. Agenda item number eight B, a proclamation of support for Central Corridor Rail Coalition to reinstate passenger rail service from Brattleboro, Vermont to New London, Connecticut. Is somebody presenting this?
No.
You're going to do this? Okay. Turn it over to the town manager.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was approached, actually, we received some correspondence in the office, that the Central Rail Corridor and slash Palmer Rail Coalition are looking at doing a reinstatement of a passenger rail service along the Brattleboro, Vermont to New London, Connecticut rail line. They have went around to ask various towns to join in the support. The concept here would be that if they were able to get passenger rail service along that central corridor, that it would spur interest in economic growth in the town of Southbridge. They do have on the site, as one of the destination locations, Old Sturridge Village, and certainly where we have several different historical elements here in the community. We do advertise some of the historic elements in the Tri-Town Chamber of Commerce facility as well as at Old Sturridge Village itself. So they've asked for a resolution to be approved by the, really just a letter of support from the town of Southbridge, and I don't know if you want me to, it's short enough, I can just read it. The resolution reads, whereas under the reliance upon particular modes of passenger transportation and neglect of others to inefficiencies, delays, and wasteful allocation of resources, and whereas a modern national passenger train system is an essential element of a truly balanced transportation plan, and whereas the low level of absence or absence of passenger train service in certain areas of New England, including this municipality, has resulted in an unbalanced transportation system in those areas, contributing to traffic congestion, air pollution, wasteful expenditures, and growth control problems, and whereas this municipality is gravely concerned with the disruption of this community caused by the aforementioned, aforesaid traffic congestion, air pollution, wasteful expenditures, and growth control problems, and whereas the town council believes that comprehensive intermodal transportation planning is necessary to resolve the aforesaid problems, and that the involvement of the local, state, and regional levels is necessary to the preparation and implementation of such plans, and whereas the town council of this municipality believes that the passenger train service is a necessary part of any comprehensive intermodal transportation system, now therefore, be it hereby resolved by the town council of the town of Southbridge and the state of Massachusetts, that one, it is and shall continue to be the policy of this municipality to take all actions necessary to support the commencement and/or expansion of passenger train service in, to this municipality and other areas of Massachusetts. And second, this municipality supports the efforts of the Central Corridor Rail Coalition to achieve the commencement and/or expansion of the passenger rail service to the aforesaid areas. And then signed and dated on, it should be today's date, which we'll put on there. What this is, is not necessarily a train, per se. It's more like, if you remember, the Green Line type service, where they have the more limited cars. So these are the passenger, the passenger facilities plus the engine is all in one. So the concept would be to try to promote some movement along this corridor, where currently there doesn't exist any passenger service on that north-south corridor. But that's the request that was made to us from one of the coalition members.
Do we need a motion? Counselor McDonald?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think that public and mass transit is very important. I think it's something that we should be supporting all the way around, and so therefore, at this time, I'd like to make a motion that we support this resolution.
Second.
Do we have any other discussion on this? Anyone else wish to? Okay. We'll do a roll call for this, please.
Counselor Livinggood?
Yes.
Counselor Markucci?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Nicola?
Yes.
Counselor Spinelli?
Yes.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Clemens?
Yes.
Seven yes?
Thank you. Before the meeting adjourns this evening, or before you leave this evening, I ask that you sign the proclamation for the town manager. Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item number nine, Citizens Forum.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Not really, no.
Can you hear me now?
Is this better? Yes.
Okay. Monique Manna, 20 Maple Street. I'm here as part of the Future of Southbridge Group, and I'm just coming here tonight to remind the good citizens of Southbridge of the November 27th Holiday Visions Parade with Santa Claus. Santa Claus comes to town at 5:00 at the corner of Elm and Main Street, and he'll be lighting our Christmas tree, and there'll be a parade down to the common. We hope you all can join. Rudy's worked very hard this year, Rudy De Gregorio, on so many new ornaments. I don't know if you noticed them. Throughout town, we have trees with Throughout town, we have trees with candy canes and elves, and many reindeer, and little snowmen, and new sculptures down at the common, soldiers. It's just marvelous what he does with George Parent also. George Parent has been a big part of this this year with making the decorations. Rudy's been at it since January of this year, making, making all these decorations to beautify our town for the upcoming holiday season. That Sunday, November 27th, at 5:00, we'll be switching on those lights. Santa Claus will be with his magic. We're going to have down at the common, we're going to have Judy from Village Photo will be there, taking pictures of your children. If you'd like to have your child's photo taken with Santa Claus by Judy, that's $5. If you just want to take your own camera, that's fine, too. Have your child sit on Santa's lap. There's going to be cocoa and cookies. We're going to have carolers at the corner of Main and Elm. We're going to have carolers down at the gazebo. We're going to have a DJ. It's just going to be so much fun for the kids. And we're keeping our fingers crossed that it won't snow, but Santa can still get here without the snow, trust me. Okay, and that's it. And I would also like to thank everyone over the last couple of weeks that has come out and assisted with all the decorations. It was just overwhelming this year with everything, all the people that came. It was just, it was wonderful to see all these good people just joining together just to make Southbridge perfect for this holiday season. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Monique.
John Pulaski, 3 Genuson Street, Southbridge. There's one thing that I do appreciate about the Friends of Southbridge, Future of Southbridge doing are these holiday events. And Chairman Nicola's father, Mr. Di Gregorio, is a real asset to this community. It shows what a retired person is willing to use their skills, how, I mean, he was impressive when he was in business, but the town is really starting to look like Santa's village, and I think it's a very good thing, and I thank these people for their efforts. At a recent subcommittee meeting, one of the members said he was sick and tired of hearing people come up here and repeat themselves. But I'm going to repeat myself about three things that I think need to be addressed. I don't feel they're getting attention. And when I see that we may be facing another tax increase soon, this is why it comes to my attention. The first thing is minor to some. It's really a pair of things, but I was reminded of it when watching a clip of a fall 2009 town council meeting in which a young gentleman who works at the Center of Hope asked about putting in a crosswalk at the Center of Hope. And something, I don't know what happened there. I know there's some issue about giving a false sense of security, but if there was one place there, but I'll tell you, sometimes in the summer, I was tempted just to go over there with paint with some friends and put one in. I know it's not the way it's supposed to be done, but I've seen on a half dozen occasions in the last few years, people just having to slam on their brakes to avoid hitting somebody. The other minor related issue is, I saw a gentleman the other day and another person back when we had snow on the ground, down by the train crossing between Big Y and the larger apartment complex where that big mill used to be when we were kids. There's a stretch of about 120 feet in which there isn't a crosswalk. Now, I'm not saying that other crosswalks that have been put in should have necessarily had a lower priority, but there isn't a crosswalk there. There are many people of limited physical and, well, people with limited capacity that have to go to the Big Y. They don't have cars. And, I mean, I talked to a few people. They're good at laying brick. I mean, if the town can't do it for some reason because the state doesn't allow it, perhaps we should call our state rep. I don't know the reasons. I know there's sometimes some complexity, but no, between...
You mean where you would take a left if you were going to head out up towards Dudley River Road?
Correct. Around the bridge, about fifty or so feet on both sides. It's like, it's worn. It looks like maybe it could have been a sidewalk there at one time. It's really, now, these people, some hot towel, you know, they seem to get mixed. And the other things that, they upset me. Maybe I should just let go of it. It's been four years. But we were told, it bothers me the most because at the time, people know, I was living in South Florida. I was, I was in town. I was a Southbridge town. I just think I came up as much, flew up as much as four times a month during that vote, this council, to approve the landfill contract. And I'm not going to say it was false pretenses because I do not know the information the town accountant had, but we were assured that night, actually, the council was assured that night, that if they voted in the affirmative, that the next year, this town would get $3 million. This is from the town accountant. Now, some of us that were involved, the hundred eighty-some-odd Southbridge citizens that are involved in litigation against that site assignment, could be blamed, understandably, for the first few years when those millions didn't come our way. But last September, the DEP gave the landfill operator a provisional permit to bring those larger volumes of waste in. And when we're considering raising the taxes of the people of Southbridge, I can't help but be annoyed that this contract appears to not be honored, appears. I'm not an attorney, and I know our current attorney's overwhelmed, but perhaps, as the new year approaches, the council could consider finding an attorney that is expert at getting contracts between municipalities and companies of that nature honored. There's a big difference between, and I mean, since that contract, we've handed over $4 million that was supposed to no longer be needed to be held by us because we were told by the attorney from Colplamon and Page that we will not have, that we will not have any liability. Yet the provisional permit that I referred to just a moment ago clearly states, from the Department of Environmental Protection, that we do have liability up there. So there's that $4 million. We gave them another seven, we borrowed $7 million. So there's $11 million. We've actually given them more money than we've received, so perhaps we can get some of that $160 million we were promised. And that's...
Mr. Pulaski, your time is...
Okay. Thank you for your patience and for listening to me tonight. I hope everyone has a really good holiday, but let's try to get the money we're due before we get it from our taxpayers. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Pulaski.
Just Madam Chair, I won't engage in a debate, but I do want to just respond to a couple of items. Sometimes things come to me fairly quickly. We did have a gentleman from the Center of Hope that wanted to have a crosswalk put by the Center of Hope entranceway. That was deemed to be unsafe, unsafe condition. We actually did have a consultant that specializes in folks with special needs come in and laid out a path for that gentleman to walk that was safe. He had issues of site limitations as well as other considerations, but we did address that, and that was a recommendation by the folks at the state, that we create a safe area. On the crosswalk at the Big Y, I guess we can, we can look at that for something. And in terms of the landfill contract, we are about a $50 million a year operation. The landfill contract generates, for direct dollars that can be used in any way, about $1 million. That will go up as the amount of tonnage goes up. There are other expenses that, it's probably valued at about $2 million a year, but there are other expenses that are used to offset that other balance. So I just, I'm not quite exactly sure with the numbers that were laid out in there, but I do, you know, all that money is accounted for, all that money is specifically identified in the plan, have been identified in the plan in the time that I've been here. So I'm not aware of what, what elements have been lost, and I believe anything has been lost, and everything has been clearly portrayed to the town in terms of that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Good evening, Counselors. I'm Roger Kawa, into today Avenue. Former Speaker mentioned about the crosswalk near Brookside Terrace, or South Village, I call it. There is no asphalt or concrete sidewalk to walk on from Big Y to their homes. Well, the story is, about a year ago, I submitted a list of how many dwellings there was from Hunter's Ridge, including Brookside Terrace, all the apartments. It was about, I believe it's about 300 a month, occupants. Anyway, the story, you submitted, you submitted a letter to Santa Moore in Boston, and said, and the reply on that was, I believe, Santa Moore said, we'll do nothing till we reconstruct the highway. Now, the thing is, also, you have a problem there, is you have a curve, and you have the railroad tracks, and that still, rails are still in the road. Well, when your road is wet and you drive too fast over those tracks, your vehicles are going to slide, and pedestrians walking along that crosswalk and railroad tracks, sooner or later, somebody's going to get popped with a cop because it's a very slick surface when it's wet, and pedestrians are walking adjacent to the road, and there may be, there's no protection between the road surface and the dirt they're walking on. It's the same level, and they're pushing carriages to and from the grocery store. Till somebody gets hurt, nothing will be done about it. I'm not blaming the town of Southbridge, but it's from Brookside Terrace through the railroad tracks, estate property, and the politicians have done nothing about it. So I say, go after them because they're the ones that goofed, because something should be done, because there's over 100 apartments in that, in that complex area, and before somebody gets hurt, something should be done about it. Thank you very much, and all have a pleasant holidays. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kawa. Do I have any other citizens who wish to come forward, Citizens Forum? Okay, we're going to move on. Agenda Item Number 10, vote to approve the appointment of Michael Janes to the Education and Human Services Subcommittee effective immediately through July 31st, 2012.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Could I have a roll call, please?
Counselor Markucci?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Nicola?
Yes.
Counselor Spinelli?
Yes.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Clements?
Yes.
Counselor Livinggood?
Yes.
Seven yes?
Thank you. Agenda Item 11, vote to ratify change order number two for a maximum total of $47,108 for the middle-high school project.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Okay. Might I say that this was voted also by the School Building Committee unanimously to move forward on. Could we have a roll call, please?
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Nicola?
Yes.
Counselor Spinelli?
Yes.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Clements?
Yes.
Counselor Livinggood?
Yes.
Counselor Markucci?
Yes.
Seven yes?
Thank you. Agenda Item Number 12, vote to ratify the proposal with M., with Maya Health Benefits Trust for insurance renewals for the two Blue Cross Blue Shield Senior Plans effective January 1st, 2012 through December 31st, 2012. Thirteen, right? It is 2012, sorry. Okay. I'm sorry.
So moved. Second.
Counselor McDonald?
Thank you, Madam Chair. In accordance with Mass General Law 268A, I'll recuse myself from this. I have a family member participating. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thanks. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Nicola?
Yes.
Counselor Spinelli?
Yes.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Clements?
Yes.
Counselor Livinggood?
Yes.
Counselor Markucci?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Recused.
Six yes, one recused.
Thank you. Agenda Item Number 13, vote to ratify the snow and ice control operations agreements between the town of Southbridge and the awardees as listed below for snow plowing and/or snow removal. Snow plowing. Leonard Carovo. Deanna Hazard. Philip Langto, AKA Hemlock Landscaping. James Lavelle, AKA Lavelle Construction Company Incorporated. John Hanson. M. Lucier and son. Jeffrey Bruzzo, AKA JG Bruzzo Landscaping and Construction. Richard LaFlesh. Powell Semiga. Norman Brodeur. Mark Passarelli. Snow removal. Christopher Parent, AKA Parent Landscaping and Construction Company. Jeffrey Bruzzo, AKA JF Bruzzo Landscaping and Construction. Anthony Pallone, AKA A. Pallone Trucking. Richard Guerin Jr. James Pioppi, AKA Pioppi Construction Incorporated. John Figgel, AKA Figgles Junkyard Incorporated. Sidewalk snow removal. James Lavelle, AKA Lavelle Construction Company Incorporated. Backup plowing equipment, only in an emergency or as a fill-in. That would be David Demers. Philip Langto, AKA Hemlock Landscaping. Christopher Parent, AKA Parent Landscaping and Construction Company. James Pioppi, AKA Pioppi Construction Incorporated. Backup snow removal equipment. Philip Langto, AKA Hemlock Landscaping. Christopher Parent, AKA Parent Landscaping and Construction Company. John Figgel, AKA Figgles Junkyard Incorporated. James Pioppi, AKA Pioppi Construction Incorporated. Temporary plow drivers in town vehicles. Maurice Capistrand. James H. Latour. James W. Latour.
So moved. Second.
Madam Chair, we have gone through the list, and there are a few revisions that I would like to recommend this evening, just two small ones. Deanna Hazard, upon additional review, we found problems with that, so I would like to have her removed from the snow plowing. And on the backup plowing equipment, if we could add the name Donald LaRoch, L.A.R.O.C.H.E. Those are the two. We did check to make sure that people are current in their taxes and so forth, and I've received word this afternoon that everyone on the list is basically compliant and ready to go.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Counselor Clements?
Deanna Hazard was here earlier before the meeting started and asked because she, apparently, her phone for the past week has been having issues, and apparently, there was a message that she received and was concerned because it said something about not having some component that you were looking for. And she came to the meeting, and I know she spoke with Conrad Vandal, so that's what she indicated to me. And then she said, but my name is on the list, so I guess everything is okay. So she went back home to her children, but she wasn't sure what they were looking for because the message was garbled and whatever, and she only received it today. So is there any way to, to have that pending, her making sure that there's a contact? Because she was here to this meeting and was told, oh, it's on the list, so she would have stayed or would have made arrangements for her children to stay, but now she doesn't know what to, you know, now she's probably watching this, saying...
That's, that's fair.
What's going on?
And I just got this literally at the, at 4:00 this afternoon. What I would suggest is that the council does take that off for tonight if we are able to work out the issues, and I would encourage her to be in touch with the DPW folks. I don't wish to go into the specific details of what's deficient.
Right, I don't know what they are.
But there are, there is a matter that is deficient. If she's able to resolve that, then we can bring her name forth for the December 5th meeting, and let's hope that it doesn't snow until between now and then.
Okay. Thank you. Let's really, really, really hope. Okay. Counselor McDonald?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through to the town manager, I just, I know you said that you'd vetted all this fully. So everybody on this list has the proper type of vehicle, the proper registration, and the proper insurance also to be driving their vehicles for this type of activity?
From what I've been told by DPW, yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Anything else? I have a motion and a second on this. Could we have a roll call, please?
Counselor Spinelli?
Yes.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Clements?
Yes.
Counselor Livinggood?
Yes.
Counselor Markucci?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Nicola?
Yes.
Seven yes?
Thank you. Agenda Item Number Four... Agenda Item Number 14. Vote to accept the proposed components of an application as outlined in memos of, in the memos of November 10th, 2011, and November 19th, 2011, from Economic Development Director to the FY 112.
It should be 2012.
2012. Mass Community Development Block... Mass Community Development Block Grant Program due December sixteen, two, um, two thousand and eleven, and to allow the town manager to sign grant documents, including the application cover page and a grant agreement with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and any other application documents.
So moved. Second.
Madam Chair? Discussion?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion to just amend that, to include some information from that, those memos, if that's possible. I would just like to insert after the date of eleven nineteen eleven, to include the statement which included proposals for social development program grants by Full Gospel Center and Literacy Volunteers. That way it includes the information of that particular member and what we discussed at the meeting.
Okay.
And maybe have in the amount of fifty thousand each.
Okay. Vote to accept the proposed components of an application as outlined in the memos of November tenth, two thousand and eleven, and November nineteenth, two thousand and eleven, which includes proposals for social development program grants by, and these will be in caps, Full Gospel Center and Literacy Volunteers. And then you can continue, you know, from economic development director from that point. Okay? Can I have a motion? Pardon me?
I was just gonna say, can we put in the amount there?
Oh, certainly.
In the amount of fifty thousand each.
Proposals in the amount of fifty thousand each.
I just thought if we mirrored the language that's in the vote.
Which included proposals, you know that part? In the amount of fifty thousand dollars each. I'd like to explain, if I might. Last year, the, um, Planning and Development Subcommittee had before it a hundred thousand dollars, which was taken from the CDBG grants, and that hundred thousand dollars was awarded to two nonprofits in Southbridge. Those were Centro Las Americas Incorporated and Aspira. Those two nonprofits will be up and running in January of two thousand and twelve and will be utilizing those two grants that were awarded to them last, this past year. We will be voting on the ratification of those contracts in the next two agenda items. What Agenda item number fourteen is doing is, once again, we will be doing this, and the two programs that have been awarded fifty thousand dollar grants are Full Gospel Center and Literacy Volunteers, and this was done through the Planning and Development Subcommittee. So that's what that, this, this, um, Agenda item is about. So I'm, I'm entertaining a motion to amend Agenda item number fourteen.
I'm to agen-, uh, modify the agenda item as rewritten? Second.
Any discussion? Counselor McDonald?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, just, in, in looking at the title of the program and the nonprofit involved, is there any impediment using public funds because this is a church-related activity?
It is not.
Okay.
It is not. If, if you read through the, through the two proposals, you will, I, I was too concerned at first when I read through it, and it really is not.
Okay.
Counselor Clements?
This is interesting you brought that up, Counselor McDonald, because I was thinking it could probably use a little more explanation, just a short one. Um, Full Gospel is listed as the presenter, but the reality is it's a youth program, it's an after-school youth program which you may have read through on there, so sort of a pseudo boys and girls club that they're proposing, um, for the hours of, I believe, like, three to six or three to seven, five days a week, and then weekend hours and much needed in our community. And while there is, um, some, uh, volunteer support from similar people who belong to Full Gospel, there's also the Cops and Kids and other supports that are gonna be brought in and hopefully make this program really develop here in our community and, and provide a service that's sorely lacking. So, it's a great mentoring and, and, um, educational program that's gonna have tutoring, mentoring, and all that good stuff for the community. So, as, as Counselor Nicola said, it didn't have a, it may, it says Full Gospel, but the reality is it's its own, it's a brand-new program that's independent, but it happens, um, the pastor of, of Full Gospel, Esteban, I really don't remember his last name, I always get, I always call him just Esteban, great guy, um, is, is developed the program and has been looking for funding to get it out there. And it will take place right in our town. Um, they're, they will be looking at facilities right, um, in the Main Street corridor area, so it'll be very accessible to the youth of our community, definitely a plus all around. So it'll help the business to rent that vacant space and then provide a great service, so it, it got, uh, good scores, so.
My explanation, thank you. I'd like to state before we, we take this vote that I will be recusing myself. I am the, um, Vice President of the Board of Trustees for Literacy Volunteers and, uh, seeing as they're included in this, I will not be voting. Um, but Tracy, did you have something further?
We will be voting on the, the amendment right now, right?
The first amendment.
Yes, first amendment.
Amendment.
Oh, I can, I can vote on the amendment, but when it comes to the, the actual vote, I won't be.
You can vote on the amendment?
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Clements?
Yes.
Counselor Livinggood?
Yes.
Counselor Markucci?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Nicola?
Yes.
Counselor Spinelli?
Yes.
Seven yes?
Thank you. And now the actual vote. Vote to accept the proposed compo-, proposed components of an application. I'm gonna try to do this again. Would you read it? How about that? You read it now that it's all put together, please.
Okay, vote to accept the proposed components of an application as outlined in the memos of November tenth, two thousand and eleven, and November nineteenth, two thousand and eleven, which includes proposals in the amount of fifty thousand dollars each for social development program grants by Full Gospel Center and Literacy Volunteers from Economic Development Director to the FY two thousand and twelve Mass Community Development Block Grant Program due December sixteenth, two thousand and eleven, and to allow the town manager to sign grant documents, including the application cover page and a grant agreement with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and any other application documents.
Thank you.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? We'll have a roll call, please.
Counselor Clements?
Yes.
Counselor Livinggood?
Yes.
Counselor Markucci?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Spinelli?
Yes.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Six yes?
Thank you.
One recused?
Thank you. Thank you. Agenda item number fifteen, vote to ratify the fi-, fifty thousand dollar CDBG contract with Centro Las Americas Incorporated for a Latino elder program.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Livinggood?
Yes.
Counselor Markucci?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Nicola?
Yes.
Counselor Spinelli?
Yes.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Clements?
Yes.
Seven yes?
Thank you. Sixteen, vote to ratify the fifty thousand dollar CDBG contract with Aspira of Massachusetts Incorporated for a high school mentoring program.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Markucci?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Nicola?
Yes.
Counselor Spinelli?
Yes.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Clements?
Yes.
Counselor Livinggood?
Yes.
Seven yes?
Thank you. Seventeen, vote to ratify the contract and scope of services for the town of Southbridge that covers the transfer of FY two thousand and twelve local cultural council funds allocated in the amount of eighty, eighty-one hundred dollars from November first, two thousand and eleven, to June thirtieth, two thousand and twelve.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Nicola?
Yes.
Counselor Spinelli?
Yes.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Clements?
Yes.
Counselor Livinggood?
Yes.
Counselor Markucci?
Yes.
Seven yes?
Thank you. Agenda item number eighteen, vote to amend the bylaw to adopt an Economic Development Commission and Industrial Development Financing Authority provision under Chapter Three, Appointed Officers, Section Three dash two-two-two, Economic Development Commission, and Section Three dash two-two-three, Industrial Development Finance Authority. This is the third and final reading.
So moved. Second.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I might, um, this has been read before at the council, at the third reading, uh, it was not read in its entirety, and in the bylaws, it does say that the, the bylaw has to be read in its entirety.
Okay.
So, I don't know whether you would like to read it in its entirety or would, would you like me to read it in its entirety, but one way or another?
Go for it.
I think we should do that.
Okay.
I would've been happy to, to let you.
That's, okay.
In the, in, in the numbering, I think we are gonna adjust the numbers, but I do believe that that would be just ministerial for us to, just to adjust the numbers. I think we, uh, we hit, hit it wrong. So it would be to add to Chapter Three, under Appointed Officials, an Economic Development Commission, um, and then under Establishment, there shall be an Economic Development Commission appointed by the town manager, subject to confirmation by the town council, which shall consist of not more than seven members, serving staggered terms for three years each. The initial appointment shall consist of two members for three, three-year terms, two members for two-year terms, and one member for one-year term, with all subsequent terms to be three years. One member may be a non-resident, provided that said member is in a decision-making position in the Southbridge, in the Southbridge enterprise. Up to two voting alternate members may be appointed. The chairman of the authority may designate any alternate member to sit on the authority in case of absence, inability to act, or conflict of interest on the part of any member or in the event of vacancy on the commission, until said vacancy is filled in a manner pers- in a manner provided in this section, and this is done under accordance with Chapter, uh, the Charter, Chapter Four dash three dash one and four dash three dash two. Under the next section of it, Authority and Responsibilities, the Economic Development Commission shall promote a strong and vibrant town economy in order to increase the tax base, provide jobs, goods, and services to the community. The Economic Development Commission shall work to promote an entrepreneurial spirit throughout the various sectors of the economic development in, in the town. The Economic Development Commission shall review and make recommendations regarding the tax increment financing agreements, facilitate the town's permitting process, promote the town's industrial park and other enterprise areas, work to attract and retain advantageous growth, fulfill the responsibilities of the town's Industrial Development Finance Authority, and perform such measures as will establish a good environment for growth and the retention of enterprise, thus improving the economic development condition of the town. The next section would read, uh, the Industrial Development Finance Authority, under the section of Establishment, the Economic Development Commission, as provided in the Section Three dash two dash two-two, and that may change, of these bylaws shall be in the Industrial Development Financing Authority, and the Economic Development Commission is sitting as an Industrial Development Financing Authority. The town manager shall appoint a five members of the Economic Development Commission as directors of the Industrial Development Financing Authority, subject to the confirmation by the town council. All five directors of the Industrial Development Finance Authority must be residents of the town of Southbridge. And this is done in accordance with the Chapter, um, the Charter, Chapter Four, subsection three, uh, one, and then four-three-two, as well as Mass General Law's Chapter Forty-D. Under Authority and Responsibilities, the Economic Development Commission has provided, four in Section Three dash two-two-two of these bylaws shall be in Industrial Development Finance Authority and have the authority and responsibilities provided under Mass General Law, Chapter Forty-D. Uh, if this is read and favorably acted upon, uh, this evening, then we will fairly shortly solicit applications for folks and we will fill the spots officially to have this become a operative part of the town infrastru-, part of town of the, part of the town organization.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Does anybody at the, up here have anything? Counselor McDonald?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I've mentioned this before when it's been read, and, um, again, I'm opposed to this, this is expansion of government. I, I see a couple of problems with it. Uh, first and foremost, it's an erosion and undermining, in my opinion, of the authority of the town council by creating more appointed positions by the town manager. If you, uh, look at and do some further research on the power that is given to a fin-, a develop- industrial finance, or development finance authority, they have the power to issue bonds. Um, and it's, most of this is relative to communities that have a landfill. I see this as a means to get around the democratic process, uh, to get around the elected body that serves, uh, the will of the people and is another expansion of government, uh, because regardless of, you know, whether they're volunteers or not, there's still going to have to be work that's done, it's gonna have to be budgeted, and at some point in time, it is going to, uh, affect the budget in the future. So, based upon those points, there are more, but I'll leave it at that, and I think those are strong enough to stand on their own merits. I would encourage, uh, the council to not, uh, support this, uh, and to vote it down, and I will certainly be voting no tonight. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counselor. Anybody else up here wish to speak on this issue? One moment, please.
Thank you.
No? Okay, Mr. Pulaski?
There's something within this in particular that concerns me. Seven-two, to construct and to improve, maintain and repair industrial development, pollution control, and solid waste disposal facilities, to issue bonds as herein provided. Then on to seven-five, without limitation of the foregoing, to borrow money, to accept grants from and to enter into contracts, leases, and other transactions, transactions with the Commonwealth or its agencies, or instrumentalities, any federal agency, any municipality, bank or other financial institution, corporation or other authority organized under this chapter. You know, I can understand the concept of running a town like a business, but when a town acts as a business and borrows money, potentially tens of millions of dollars, and this could not have happened in a, in a town that is under a town form of government without going before the voters. But here, not only are we not going before the town council, we're creating another entire bureaucracy that appears to me that we're trying to loan money for some other company again, based on, I don't know what the excuse is going to be, but I respectfully beseech you, especially since there are other bylaws that are causing anxiety in the community, for example, whether or not we need clear plastic bags, whether or not we're really gonna be fined two hundred and fifty dollars if we have a few recyclable items inadvertently thrown in. I'd, I'd like that to be, any, any senior citizen that should be waived. I mean, they should try, but the idea of some old person getting, I'll never forget that person that got fined for shoveling, not shoveling, there's snow, uh, eighty-year-old World War II veteran. But please wait, you, Counselor Nicola had a very good idea when she suggested that we do all of our bylaws at once, because you can't just go and repair here or there. Sometimes you're just gonna do the whole, the whole thing, and, and this is an excellent example. Uh, now we're in a rush to pass this. Please, let's put it off till the new year. Please, let's be prudent about this. We may be wrapping the taxpayers with, not the taxpayers today, perhaps people that are like our children's age or, but it, it, it's just another excuse to, to add the burden to the, on the taxpayers and where nobody will be accountable except for a few appointees. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you. Mr. Clark?
Madam Chair, um, in the way economic development is done, when a business entity wants to come into a community, they want to see whether the town really is business-friendly or not, and what does that mean? And what does that mean? They want to see what are the programs that are available to it. These two, the Economic Development Commission and the Industrial Development Financing Authority, are simply tools to assist in the promotion of development of the community. If we don't have these tools in the arsenal, then it gives a company a reason to pick somewhere else. And I think that if we truly intend on being business-friendly, if we truly intend on trying to promote and move this town forward, then you need to have the tools. We have people that have acted in the Economic Development Commission capacity, that have been trying to move this town forward. They put forth a permitting guide that I think showed a lot of work. We have a group of dedicated volunteers that want to continue to move this town forward. And I think unfortunately, in terms of the background behind this, the town never formally adopted a bylaw. So they worked with us to adopt this bylaw, to create this, and to give us a tool. And if people truly are interested in moving this town forward, these are tools that we definitely should have in the arsenal to be able to work with developers coming in. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Counselor McDonald?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The manager's comments notwithstanding, again, the thing is, it has to do with raising money. They have the ability to, they do that by using taxpayer money that could potentially, as I see it, bypass this council through this group. And it's all great, we want to promote the community. I want to see the community move forward, too. We have an Economic Development Section already in the town that we're paying for through tax money, and I am very apprehensive about giving the power to raise funds outside and beyond the scope of the Town Council to another appointed entity. This council is elected by the people to serve the interests of the people, and I think it's that particular check that helps us be mindful of the fact that when we are making these types of decisions, in a fiscal sense, that we're doing it with the taxpayers' money, and that we're answerable to them in the final analysis when it comes to the polls. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I was hoping that...
Name, please.
My name is Amelia Poliquin. I live at 275 Marcy Street. Could you please clarify if whether these votes by these two new bodies would be subject to approval by the Town Council, or would they be voting independently?
Mr. Clark?
I believe that the majority of these elements would be, it is a quasi-independent board. So, under the law, it says here, "Through the Industrial Development Finance Authority shall have the following powers, to the extent that the same are not elsewhere in this chapter, expressly limited." What we're actually talking about, we're not talking about the bylaw change. Actually, what's being discussed now is state law.
Right. I have a question.
So this is power that has been given in state law to this agency to do?
So if they vote to issue a bond, it's not subject to approval by the council?
In my experience, and I've done a couple of these over my twenty years, and when you do have the financing, that the town does have some say in that. With these, I'm not as familiar with specifically with Massachusetts, the times that I've done this, I've done it actually out of state. But in terms of having businesses that are interested in the one that I've done, the financing and the commitment for those bonds is from the business enterprise itself, so the business enterprise funds it. But if it's a general obligation bond, anytime it's a general obligation bond, the ultimate responsibility comes before the town. But I would think that, in this case, as well in the case of my past experience, that in that circumstance, it's pretty well thought out whether the town wants to basically commit to something like that or not. But the financing of it is really done primarily by the business enterprise. These are not tools that are used all the time, and to be perfectly honest, when a business entity comes in, it would have to say, "This is something that we want to look at," and that that is something that each individual proposal has to stand on its own merits, what makes sense and what doesn't.
Mm-hmm. I'm just, as a voter, I would prefer that, you know, if there's a general issue bond, that would be ultimately the responsibility of the taxpayers of the town, that it would be approved by the people that we elect into office. So that's, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to weigh in on this? Mr. Counselor Spinelli?
In reading the Chapter Forty-D, the Industrial Development of Cities and Towns, Section Seven, Eight, which is the lead-in to all the others and defines everything else that happens afterwards, it says, "For the purpose," and being an English major and making sure, "for the purpose of carrying out a project, as authorized by this chapter, a municipality," which is, in our case, if it was to happen, would be the town of Southbridge, "acting by or through an industrial development financing authority shall have the following powers." So my understanding of the English language is, is that even though this says that they can do a lot, it's still run through the municipality and the town. And so that ultimately, the town, in conjunction with this body, has the authority to issue this out. So it's not, to me, it's not something that's done unilateral just by a commission. It's done as a joint venture. So the whole purpose behind this is to have additional people there who have experience in business to help with business development and to move forward. It's a conjunctive thing. It's not, it's not separate, if I'm reading this correctly. And so therefore, I think it's a tool that's available to a municipality, to put a program or to help develop industry within the town, and to stimulate it with funds if it's needed, and if it's proper and appropriate. So I don't, I think this is an additional tool that is offered, that is, was created by state law, and now we're taking it in and using it for our own purpose. I, I don't, I don't see where this group is going to be issuing bonds on its own. I think they're, by the heading of the chapter where it begins, Section Seven-A, it says, and Section Seven is Powers of Municipalities. It's not, so I think it's automatically restrictive. It's just a tool that is creative, I think. So I will support this.
Okay. Counselor McDonald?
Thank you, Madam Chair. What that phrase means, there are some laws in the Commonwealth we have to follow, and there's some laws that municipalities have the opportunity to adopt. And they adopt that through some type of legal basis, and typically, in this case, through a bylaw. So when you adopt this bylaw, the municipality known as Southbridge is adopting a bylaw that now says, acting through that body will do those things. The municipality, not the Town Council. The Town Council's not the municipality, the municipality is. When the Town Council, by adoption of this bylaw, does this, we are then therefore now delegating that authority and responsibility to them. That's as I interpret it. That's how my understanding is to how this type of law works when you adopt it. And you're saying that you're giving them that power and authority. So I appreciate the Counselor's interpretation of it based on his education and background, but the understanding of how the law is applied, once you adopt the bylaw, the bylaw then gives that authority to them. And we relinquish that responsibility. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I would like the author of this to come forward. Would that be you, Mrs. Ackley?
Good evening, everybody.
Hi. Could you please explain once and for all? I'm going to ask, first, I'm going to ask you the question that's burning inside of me.
Yes.
Is this group going to be able to spend money without coming through the Town Council first? That's as plain as I can put it.
Not in, not in their opinion. They did not expect that.
Because I don't intend to support that. Any group in this community spending the town's money without coming through the council first.
I understand.
And so this, this is not, you don't intend, they don't intend to do that?
No, they don't.
Are they legally allowed to do that based on the wording of this proposal?
Well, it is, I read the statute, too, not too long ago, because they are an authority. There are certain powers that they have. To be honest, I'm not an attorney, and sometimes reading the statutes, a little bit like negotiating a forest. But I did not interpret it that they could borrow money for, on the behalf of the town. I suppose that I assumed it was similar to the way the Redevelopment Authority works, where they can, they do have certain powers also, but the steps are that they go through the Town Manager, for instance, I mean, to the Town Council, for instance, when they applied to have a redevelopment area, that was actually voted formally by Town Council. So I would like to say, I would like to say that, it's, sometimes things get a little confused, but the way this all started was, a few years ago, maybe five or six years ago, we, I really felt that we needed an Economic Development Commission. So I approached Mr. Carlisle about it, and he asked, "Are you sure there is no Economic Development Commission already?" So I went down to the Town Clerk's office, and we could not find that there was an Economic Development Commission. But we did find, however, that in 1976, an Economic, I mean, an Industrial Development Financing Authority was voted by state legislature. And then individuals were appointed to that. And so I looked into the statute then, and then did some research to see if it had ever been reversed. Couldn't find that it had been reversed. So Mr. Carlisle appointed seven members to a new Economic Development Commission and seven members to an IDFA, and they all met together. What we didn't realize at the time was that there was no bylaw incorporating them. So that's what this whole thing was designed to do, to make it legal. And in doing so, I read the town bylaws and noticed that the planning board, if you look at the town bylaws, the planning board acts as the town's special permit granting authority. So then I talked to Mr. Attorney Caprera and said, "Do we need to have similar language here, because the IDFA still exists?" And he said, "Yes, I think you should write that in." So that's how this happened, and I'm sorry if it's caused a lot of confusion. I don't think anybody on the Economic Development Commission wants to do anything except Economic Development Commission, but the IDFA exists. As far as we know, it has never been repealed. So we thought that we should make it legal, and that's how it happened.
Thank you. Thank you. Counselor Clements, and then Counselor Markucci.
In light of the MGL Chapter Forty-D information, which is quite explicit, and I'm not sure if I agree 100% with Counselor Spinelli, I thought I did it first, and then the more I read it, the less sure I was. And obviously, there's a lot of unsuredness up here. Is there a reason, I realize this is third reading, vote, all that good stuff, is there a reason it can't wait for us to get a better clarification on the Chapter Forty powers, so to speak?
Absolutely no reason why that can't wait.
Right. Because I don't believe we should forge forward on something that has so much concern for many, obviously, I would think, and this is something very important, and I want to feel really sure when I support or not support it. And at this moment, I feel very good about the Economic Development Commission, but I'm not feeling very good about what I read in the Forty, Chapter Forty. So I would like it to be clarified what this does. Does this allow powers to go beyond, you know, and not have to be approved through the council? Because again, that, I would agree with Counselor McDonald on the fact that it's too much power to just sort of end up in limbo with seven appointed or five appointed and two alternates, and whoever you choose, and the chair chooses a voting alternate, that's just too much out there. I think that's just too much freedom. So I would make a motion to postpone this until we have further clarification.
Second.
Okay. Thank you. Before we do anything further, Counselor Markucci, you wanted to weigh in.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Actually, Counselor Clements stated exactly what I was going to do, so thank you very much.
I know you very well, and I kind of thought so. Okay. All right. So we have a motion to postpone this action until we have some clarification. And a second, do I have any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Nicola?
Yes.
Counselor Spinelli?
Yes.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Clements?
Yes.
Counselor Livinggood?
Yes.
Counselor Markucci?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Seven yes?
Thank you. Agenda item number nineteen, Counselors' Forum. Counselor Vandal?
This is to the Town Manager. What's the story on the rez? I, we needed, we went out for bid, and the bids came in, and then they told us we had to go for, can't remember the word.
Prevailing wage.
Right.
Prevailing wage.
Yes, right, prevailing wage. Where does that stand?
We did receive a bid. It was not in compliance with prevailing wage. Someone had made, mentioned that on prevailing wage, if you do renovation, or if you do repair, it doesn't require prevailing wage. If you do renovation or anything new, it does. Received, we received a bid for about $8,000. We did go back and ask if they were in accordance with prevailing wage rates. We are in the process of collecting that prevailing wage rate bids that do have that rate included in it. We've only received one to date, and if we do receive additional, then we will potentially bring it before the council, if sufficient funds exist to do the project.
Have you ever explored what I had told you about letting Luke Fallon do the work? Because that's the reason why we hired Luke Fallon. He was a master carpenter, and he was going to save the town all kinds of money. So I voted, you know, to put Luke on, on the highway department because of his capabilities to do, you know, whatever we needed done in carpentry.
We did have a discussion, myself and the DPW Director, about his availability. He is very, very tied up, and we did not think we could achieve having the repairs made in a timely fashion. So if, you know, we can have a discussion again, if we don't have sufficient funds to do this under prevailing wage, then we will re-explore that to see if we can get the work done. But one way or another, we will look at it and try to do it in the most cost-effective manner in which we can, that is compliant with state law.
That's why we hired Luke, to cost-effective. If he's tied up, let's untie him.
I'm not going to get into the micromanagement of the DPW facility.
And then I suggested, if he couldn't do it, how about Bay Path? That's what they're there for, just for the asking. And I'm sure they could make it, say that this is an emergency, and we could get the rez fixed at no cost, just the material.
We can explore that, Counsel. We can explore that.
It should have been explored already. I brought this up three, four weeks ago.
Okay, Counsel.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Is that it?
Thank you.
Counselor Markucci?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to Mr. Clark. Mr. Clark, there, I don't know if you receive phone calls, but I did, and I was kind of shocked myself when I opened up my water bill this month. Can you explain such an increase?
Yes. We have received numerous phone calls. We are in the process of converting our system. In the conversion of the system, we are putting in meters that are able to read on a more of a real-time basis, that we will be able to read more consistently. The rates did not change, but what did happen is that instead of a three-month bill, some folks had meter readings that went to four months. So the bill is a reflection of four months. As we make the transition from the old meter reads to the new electronic meter reads, there's a provision where there's going to be, I guess, to bring us up to the cycle, so that, I know several of the bills went out, and they were actually for, if you read the meter read, it should say on it that it was for whatever, instead of ninety days, it was for 120 days or a greater period of time. So the rates have not changed. The rates have been what the rates are as of July 1st. What did change is by putting the new meters in, we're actually having people have a longer period of time than the normal quarter cycle.
And it's a real time?
And it's a real read, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
You didn't, you use the same amount of water, it's just the period changed.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Counselor Markucci? I mean, sorry about that. Counselor McDonald?
Thank you, Madam Chair. In light of the manager's response to the rez issue, because Counselor Vandal did touch up on something I was curious about, but going a step further, there's two things. I've heard also that when it comes to the DPW, we talk about time. It seems to me, I recall then Counselor Logan asking when we hired this new DPW Director, and some of us were concerned about the amount of money that we were paying the individual, that we were given quite a show as to in-house projects that we could save money on because he could bring that capability to the town. And I think the rez would have been a classic case, where we could have brought immediate talent to bear, internal, not just the person, an individual mentioned by Counselor Vandal, but also our DPW Director, being able to bring the engineering background and maybe spearhead and get that project off rather quickly, in time for our youngsters around town to be able to enjoy the rez when it freezes over. Secondly, I've heard that we are going to possibly be looking to go out to bid to fix the sinkholes that are around town, where we see the barrels in the road around manhole covers or around drainage areas. And again, it begs the question in my mind if we're going to do that. Why? I know that will come up when we come to talk about it, but we really touted having this in-house capability, and I think we ought to use it and see that demonstrable savings that then Counselor Logan... that then Counselor Logan talked about. So I just wanted to make those two comments and other than that, I want to wish my fellow counselors and the citizens of Southbridge a very happy and prosperous Thanksgiving. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, if I might.
Certainly.
Number one, I really do not appreciate the comment about a show being done. The current DPW director has been and was instructed to find opportunities to save money. He has gone and has done that. He did do a fairly extensive rewrite on a lot of his own time of some of the subdivision regulation and different elements that we are looking at. He also designed by himself the bridge that is part of the rail trail project that literally saved us thousands and thousands of dollars. I have not gone and articulated all these things because some of these things are still in process, but he is very well aware of the circumstances under which he was hired. He is very well aware that he does need to hold to account that he is saving this town money and it is in my opinion that he is saving this town money in the execution of his duties. I just didn't appreciate the term of the show. We are a professional business and we laid out an expectation for what his expectations would be for his position and he has been diligently attempting to follow those. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Counsel Livinggood.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In light of the type of economy we've had and I think it behooves us all to take Thursday and look at yourself and your family and your friends and take the time to find out what you do have to be thankful for. Some things may not be pleasant, but you know, we're all alive, we're all breathing. Some of us still had jobs, some of us are still looking for jobs. And just try to remember everybody and it is a day of thankfulness. I was a little disappointed to see a commercial last week where they referred to it as football dinner. And I thought, I couldn't believe, you know, it's bad enough, they tried to take Christmas away, now they're trying to take Thanksgiving away. It's not about football, even though people enjoy it, but it's about just reviewing your life, your year and having thanks for your friends, your family and all the blessings you have had. Not everything that looks bad will turn out to be bad. Sometimes the bad things make you reflect upon what was good. So I want everybody to have a great Thanksgiving, a safe Thanksgiving for those who are traveling and we'll move on. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counsel Livinggood. Counsel Spinelli?
I have a couple of things. Try to be very brief. When I went to work this morning, I was bombarded with people who were astounded by what had occurred in the downtown area and in different areas of town for the decorations. A particular note I want to make to people was the fact that people from neighboring towns who have nothing were absolutely insulted with their own towns because of the beauty and the work that had been done to decorate our own downtown. And I think it's a reflection on what this town really does mean and what it really has for a heart and a soul. I'd also like to thank Rudy DiGigorio and his assistant, George Parent. Mr. DiGigorio is, and not because he's related to the chairperson at all.
He's not.
Okay.
I don't know him.
Okay. He is, he is a true character and so is assistant. And I say character in the most loving, respectful term that you can imagine. This is a man who donates all this time and with his assistant, they do all of this wonderful work. And those people who put out the decorations and worked hard to do that truly appreciate the fact that the man has a vision and he has a sense for what he wants to see done and he carries it forward. And those are the qualities that we all should aspire to. Last but not least, I want to wish everyone in this town to stop and think what Thanksgiving And Counselor Livinggood alluded to the fact that it's not just the football and the football games and yes, I'm rooting for Southbridge High and I'd love to see them kick butt, excuse It's not just all of those things. It's not how big the meal that you have or the number of entrees that you prepare or anything else. It's the solemnity of the day and what it celebrates, not only from a past perspective, but our own. For no matter what our situation is, whether we have it well or we don't, it's truly a remarkable time. And I wish for all the citizens of Southbridge and my fellow counselors that that day is first and foremost, an enjoyable day that we share with the people who care the most for us and we care the most about and enjoy, enjoy what is thankful in our lives because we all do. No matter what our situation, we all have many, many things to be thankful for. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Clements?
It keeps moving tonight. Thank you, Madam Chair. One thing, through you to the town manager, are we still down two at the DPW? My understanding is, I believe we were down a couple of employees at one point or so. I'm just curious.
Actually, we've filled the two vacancies and we have a person that's retiring and we have that vacancy filled as well.
Okay, so we're bringing them along.
I believe we're down one.
Okay, good. Well, that's good to hear. Hopefully, we can utilize them in a good way. I just want, you know, a lot of good talk about things and today I was able to go to the postponed Chamber of Commerce annual meeting that was held right here at the conference center, which did a great job. And this annual luncheon that they do, their annual meeting, a good, a part of this is in awards, various awards, volunteer of the year, citizen of the year. And this year, there was also another award and it was the business of the year. It was something very new and very well-deserving of the business that received this award. Much of what was said today focused around what's happened in this community over the last year, especially since June 1st and the tornado. And the recipients, the stories of the recipients and what they've done shows you just how deserving they were. And right here in our community, we have volunteer of the year, Bonnie Lasavio. And I would like to congratulate Bonnie on her award and all the work she did, especially, you can clap, it's okay, that's appropriate. She, as many of you know, works for the United Way, but went beyond her scope of duties when it came to the tornado and the efforts. And she continues that, as they pointed out today, being highly involved with the future, with hopefully no more tornadoes, but with future efforts to help in disasters such as this. So we salute you, Bonnie, for your hard work and effort for this community. The business of the year award also came from this community. The recipient was from this community. And needless to say, it's a business that's been around for a very long time and done a lot, certainly for the community, but more than just the business, the people in that business, as was pointed out, do a lot for this community and the surrounding communities because this business is located in many different areas. And that was Southridge Savings Bank. And our kudos go out to them and their employees. And Mr. Pettenelli said it, said it very well today in terms of it's not, you know, it's not the business getting this award, it's the people, it's the employees that he was accepting that award for. And they tirelessly volunteer on a regular basis for many, many programs. I was surprised to learn how many, for everything from Meals on Wheels, of course, the Habitat Project. And they're a fine example of what a business and its employees can do regardless of where they live in terms of committing to the communities in which they serve. Very, very great volunteer award service that we saw. I will mention, the citizen of the year went out to Gina Lynch from Brimfield. Some of you may know her, I didn't know her until I heard this, but she coordinated and ran and staffed and just did everything possible for that community after the tornado and continues to work at it and helped so many, many people and was, again, well-deserving of that award. So kudos to all of you and you set a fine example, especially at this time of year. The annual meeting was supposed to take place right after the snowstorm, that Monday, and unfortunately, it was postponed because of that wonderful event. And like the rest of the things that have happened in our community since January, snow and tornadoes and hurricanes and snowstorms again, they still managed to pick up and move on and have this ceremony today and this wonderful luncheon. And the chamber deserves a round of applause for all their efforts in the community that they do too. So kudos to all of you. And again, I was very proud to have been able to go there. So just one more reminder, if you haven't heard it enough, tree lighting is on Sunday. The information's on cable. We appreciate cable getting that up. You'll see some more info out there. The Santa will leave Wells at about 5:00 and will meet everybody at the tree where they will throw, where he will magically light the tree. I do want to point out one more thing on that Christmas tree. This year, all the lights on that tree are LED. For those who aren't familiar, it's very cost-effective, energy-effective, well, I wouldn't say cost-effective, they're pricey, but the LED are very energy-efficient. And so when the lights are on, they're drawing just a small fraction of what they did the first year, saving the town money on the lighting bill. We do hope down the road to be able to convert the common to such energy-efficient lights and more of you, the new citizens and you businesses, will hear about that, I'm sure, in the upcoming months when we do a push for that, for next year. So thank you and thanks to all the good volunteers, you, Mr. Spinelli, Counsel Spinelli, you were out there with your family the last two weekends. We do appreciate your hard work, along with many others. So hope to see you all at the tree lighting. Thank you.
And I'd like to personally thank Denise Clements, who, as a member of the future of Southbridge, put all that together and not as a counselor. You know, I've heard a lot of things tonight about, nice things about my father and I just want to say thank you to all of you for that. But I would like to just clarify something. He would want this. My father doesn't do this, this sort of thing for the recognition. He never has and it, it kind of bothers him when he gets the recognition. Rudy, Rudy, Rudy. Anyway, the reason I say that is because, the reason my father does this is he does it for the kids in town and for the town itself. He'd like to think that by doing this, it helps the people that live in this community feel a little bit better about their town. That's his only motivation. And the fact that he just loves to do it. It's a hobby. He's one of the luckiest people in the world. He made his living doing what he loved. Most of us don't have that, that we can say that. Well, he can. So I just wanted to say that for all of you out there that have an opportunity to see it and for those of you, I hope you enjoy it, please try to be mindful of the fact that this is done for you so that you can see what he sees when he sees the town of Southbridge. And he always sees Southbridge in the best of light. With that said, I'd like to set the next meeting. Counselor Clements? When would that be?
The next meeting will be December 5th here in Chambers after the tax rate public hearing at 6:30 PM, if that is what everybody desires.
Okay, very good. Six, it'll be 6:30 for the tax rate public hearing and then the regular town council meeting on Monday, December 5th at 7:00. I too wish to join my counselors and wishing everybody a very happy, healthy, loving, enjoyable Thanksgiving. And agenda item number 21 is adjournments.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? This meeting's adjourned. Good night.